Ooh, my. Let's try that again. I'd like to please call to order the Board of Education meeting for Celine area schools for November 23rd, 2021 at 6:30 PM. We could all please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving and Thanksgiving break coming up for a long weekend. I'm glad to see you. This is our first opportunity for public comment. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. Please note that students will be given priority to speak on any topic. The first public participation portion of the meeting will be limited to one half hour, 30 minutes normally, and limited to agenda items. A second public participation portion will be offered at the end of the agenda to allow for any other comment. Individuals addressing the board should take into consideration the rules of common courtesy. The public participation portion of the meeting cannot be used to make personal attacks against a board member, district employee, or student. Betty, do we have any public comment forums?
No.
No comment forums, no students, and no other public stakeholders, so we will move on to our fourth item. Response to public comment, I'll keep this one short as well. We appreciate all of the emails. We are best reached at sasboard@celineschools.org or through Let's Talk, so thank you for letting us know what's on your mind. I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed. Items may be added or deleted from the meeting agenda and/or the order of items may be changed at the request of an individual board member or the superintendent. The agendas must be approved before proceeding further. Could I please entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Jenny. Dennis, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, 7-0. Our first scheduled report of the evening is the Strategic Framework Revision Reports, Goals, Groups, Numbers 1 through 4. Dr. Latch?
Well, great. Thank you very much. So, we're gonna get the presentation up here on the monitors. In the meantime, I'd like to call up our Goal 1 group representatives we have here tonight. Emily, Jeff, Juliette, Sarah, and Brian are gonna help present this part, and then we're gonna move on to Goal Group Number 2 and 3, which will be led by Anna and Kurt, and then we're gonna finish with our financial goal, which is Goal Number 4. So, we start off with our Board of Ed presentation, and if we go to the next slide, we talk about our compass and how it's gonna tie directly into our strategic framework, and that's very important because we wanna live the compass within the framework itself, which will feed into both our district improvement plan and our school improvement plans. And that's very important because in the past, through the Michigan Department of Education, we've had district improvement plans and school improvement plans, but to be honest, they've largely been compliance plans. Now, we're gonna actually take our real-life plan that we want to execute in the school district and have it tied into both our district and school improvement plans. So, we go to the next slide. We're gonna get into Goal Number 1, and that's gonna be Emily Sickler is gonna take it away and talk about that.
Hi. Thanks, Steve. So, I am here just to introduce the goal, and one of the first things that we did is we just looked at the definition of the goal. And we spent a lot of time here sort of wordsmithing, going big, going small, going back big again. Our main goal here of Goal 1 is that no matter what your learner is, from young 5, stage 26, whatever paths, whatever passions, that you should be able to see your learner in that goal. So, the definition we ended up with is develop adaptive learners in order to cultivate academic, professional, and life skills for current and future success. You can see there that academic, professional, and life skills is hyperlinked. That life skills term we hear in Celine, we use that for a program. Here, what we're really looking at are some of the goals, sorry, some of the skills that go right along with the compass. And so, knowing that this will be a living document, being able to use that term and making sure that people sort of understand that. And so, after we look at that goal and figure out the definition, we will move on to breaking that down a little bit. I have no idea who's next.
So, to break that down, we get into the next step, the pedagogy, the instructional piece, and it's really to develop those instructional skills so that we've got instructional strategies and assessments that differentiate the learning for each, you know, basically for each student and provide a variety of opportunities for all students. We're gonna use a lot of different processes and procedures along with standards, early five literacy-type interventions, a lot of assessments, culturally responsible instruction. Innovation is a big piece of that. We've learned a lot of that through our recent past here in the last year. Social, emotional learning, learning pathways and CTE expansions. The measurables will be both soft and hard because this is a little bit more adaptive. Establish a comprehensive K-12 insight survey with the Celine Compass Survey. Get those targeted questions, really understand, you know, all of those elements of what's working, what's not, as well as the traditional data, you know, the NWA, the traditional test scores that we would usually use.
Hi. For the second goal, if we want to advance this slide, for Action Step 2, it's all about technology and technology integration, and what we were most excited about here was preparing our students for real-life applications and for jobs and for their ability to succeed in college. So, one of the main things that we discussed was that we didn't want tech for tech's sake. Obviously, this generation and the future generations are gonna be more tech savvy than we could ever imagine, and they already are, but we wanna make sure that we teach them how to use tech responsibly, which has a safety component and etiquette component, but also that we wanna make sure that people understand that we can use technology to level the playing field and to create more inclusive environments. And for this one, we spent time on the collaborative adaptive technologies and how we can really invest in technology to make sure that learners can all engage equally in the process that we use in all of our classrooms and our learning spaces throughout the district, and we're very excited about that. And then, of course, distance learning, which we've learned more about recently than we ever imagined we would. So, we're doing well on that, but at the time that this was started, that seemed like something that was a far reach, but we've now learned that we can be good at that. So, for the measurables on this, we think that obviously graduation rates and application of technology within the different learning environments is a logical one, but we also talked a lot about the ability to do a follow-up survey and ask students three years out of school, were you prepared? Were you ready? Were you able to learn and use technology in college as much as your peers or as much as was expected of you? And then, for some of those students, they will have entered jobs or trades, and then they can answer the same questions related to their work environment, and were they ready and prepared? So, we're really excited about what is to come, and we think technology could really add a lot.
Thank you. So, for Action Step Number 3, this is where we were really taking into consideration the spaces that really bring all of this to life, and we're also, of course, making sure that the spaces are inclusive of the social and emotional well-being of students, that holistic approach. In order to do that, we wanted to make sure that there is a warm and welcoming environment aspect. We want to make sure we're collaborating and creating partnerships with the community as much as possible. We have to ensure that the in-person aspect is covered as well as my partner, Kaim, just mentioned, that the distance learning aspects are covered as well, in case that we have to take those considerations into account. We also had a lot of discussion about how community fits into the DEI framework and acknowledge that that's an ongoing discussion, and of course, we want to make sure that that social, emotional aspect is covered across all learning spaces. The way that we want to measure this approach and success here is to establish a new survey. We want to start benchmarking different aspects that aren't yet benchmarked today, things that we can start to assess longitudinally, but also assess averages within the district. So, targeted questions around not only academics but also DEI around the compass, and then we can use those things to measure growth year after year from this point forward. And that is, of course, in addition to the data that we have access to today.
Hello, everyone. Here we're looking at Action Step Number 4, and to go along with the curriculum, we realize that the physical space is as important in aiding in this whole process, so we're looking at learning spaces. And in supporting the four Cs of collaboration, communication, critical thinking, and creativity, our learning spaces have to be redesigned to include, and we came up with a list of things that we'd like to see, and some that are already there and ones that we'd like to improve upon. And so, things such as open learning spaces, such as movable walls for co-teaching, just to aid in the collaboration amongst different groups and different subject areas, all those things, just to make that easier for the staff. Also acknowledging a variety of learning zones such as labs, gyms, gross motor, CTE spaces, outdoor spaces, the hallways, life skills rooms, et cetera, kind of acknowledging that the learning space doesn't have to be just the old-school classroom and desk in the line, that the learning can occur kind of everywhere. We need to consider all those spaces as we move forward. We also have things such as the collaboration stations, flexible furniture arrangements, again, kind of going with the movable wall idea, not having to be stuck with the seats and rows like they always have been, so if we need them in certain ways as educators, we can get there and do it quickly and not have to worry about moving to another part of the building or a different room, just to kind of help aid in the collaboration that we want our students to have. This kind of moves also to the no front-of-the-classroom idea, if you're not familiar with that, but just, again, getting away from that traditional, there's the board, there's the teacher, moving it to a more student-centered aspect whenever possible, thus, again, kind of getting away from where is the front of the room and moving it more towards the student, which all of this kind of helps get us there. Environmental lighting is also a thing that we consider because as much as we love the fluorescent lights, yes, moving to other options just to aid in those spaces, making them more welcoming, and just, yeah, when you're in it all day, yeah, it's just an important thing to include. And then, obviously, beyond the walls of the classroom too, like we said, it's not all just the rooms that we need to consider. So, where are our students throughout their day, and how can we help them with that? So, measurables when it comes to Action Step Number 4, like before, we kind of want to establish a comprehensive K-12 insight survey, kind of based around, again, the compass, again, targeting things such as those academics and the learning spaces, and then learning space audits, because, again, we don't always know what we're gonna need, so I think we know it's important to every year, every two years, and not maybe waiting five or 10, but regularly reevaluating what is it our teachers need and our students need, because, yeah, not that long ago, it was the room with the rows and that. I mean, if you asked, well, how many plugs do you have in your room, nobody's like, well, who cares? Like, whereas now, it's like, oh, my gosh, where's the charging stations and where are all these things, because, I mean, who saw all this technology, right? So, we wanna make sure then that we're able to go through this regularly and just, yeah, audit these spaces, so we know that we're maximizing the learning for all of our students and staff.
Yeah. Thanks very much for everyone who's been participating and presenting in Goal 1. Also, Sean Skelly's here. He's part of Goal 1. We also had a lot of other members who were participating in Goal 1, Jenny as well, and we really appreciate all of their effort. One thing I did want to point out is each one of those four action steps is one pillar of the compass, like learning spaces, pedagogy, so we specifically looked at the four pillars inside the compass and mapped action steps around them. So, next I'd like to introduce Anna's gonna come up and talk about Goal Number 2 and their work.
Hi. I'll wait for them to come up. Yeah, you can head up. So, first, I just want to thank this group. Obviously, this work started two years ago and then took a nice 18-month pause, and this group came back as energetic as ever to participate and really contribute to what we came up with. So, I'll let them introduce themselves, but I think something that's important to mention is we had some internal people and external stakeholders of all kinds with the different hats that they wear, students that are currently, or children that are current students, and some of them have graduates as well. So, we had a nice mix of people who had varying experiences within our district. So, the wording of our goal did change a little bit. I'll read it aloud, obviously, strengthen family, community, and school relationships to continually enhance academic experiences and extracurricular opportunities for all students. The real shift that we saw actually was exposed by the pandemic and the learning experience that our students went through during that time. And two things I wanted to point out is that the original goal talked about just family and school relationships, and we brought that community piece in, mostly because of what we saw, you know, especially at the beginning of the pandemic, and how much our families depended on that support of all of the entities within the Celine community. So, that piece was very important. And then, we also saw, and we're all still seeing it, how much those extracurriculars really play a role in the learning of our students. So, that piece at the end about not just academic experiences, but we wanted to make sure that we were highlighting and focusing on extracurricular experiences for our students as well. So, we have four action steps as well, and each of them are gonna come up and walk you through that process.
I will click it forward. So, our Action Step Number 1 was to communicate consistency with all stakeholders via multiple platforms. And so, as we know, communication is absolutely everything. So, when you take a look at some of the platforms that we are currently using, news and notes, social media, weekly emails, both from the district level and the building level, annual reports and community conversations, so we're obviously always looking for ways to expand communication in order to make certain that all of our stakeholders understand what is happening. Measurable, we can take a look at response rates to email, social media, reach statistics, open rates, how many actually open that email when they receive it. My favorite has been my blog. I'm like, over a thousand, yay. Feedback from satisfaction surveys as well. So, that is Action Step Number 1. Action Step Number 2 is all about partnerships. So, what we mean by this is the fact that we want to develop community partnerships, and we actually have some really, really fantastic ones that are already, have benefited both our students and the organization. So, here, we're thinking reciprocity. So, yes, it's important for our students to get involved, but we also know that there are organizations within the Celine community that depend on us. So, when we talk about external participation in community events, we're talking about things like the community fair, right? Having them reach out to us, we go and participate. It's definitely a win-win as far as a mutual relationship. And then, internal programming that includes community groups. So, when our students say, you know, we'd like to do a blood drive, or we want to do something for Celine Social Services, that's super important because we know that that is benefiting others as well. So, measurables there, surveying, surveying seems to be very popular this evening, stakeholders, partnering, our partnership satisfaction, and then attendance rates, who is coming, right, to our events. So, that is Action Step Number 2.
All right. Action Step Number 3 is about establishing relationships with educational institutions, all rooted in continuous learning. So, how we're gonna do that, we have the benefit of our location. We have University of Michigan, we have Eastern Michigan, Washnaw Community College, all very close to us. So, they come and recruit our students, they send their admissions officers. We get admissions officers from across the state. And then, we also work to bring interns or student teachers from Eastern close by, and we can recruit for teachers as well, close to those areas. Also, connecting with the non-traditional educational organizations such as Southwest Washnaw Consortium, where students can learn about the trades while they're still in high school and with the potential of graduating and going into that trade. And then, the early middle college, which includes such examples as the Early College Alliance and Washnaw Alliance for Virtual Education, where Celine students are taking classes at Eastern or Washnaw, and they're still Celine students, but they spend their day at Eastern or Washnaw. And then, when they graduate, it does add an extra year, but they graduate with both their high school diploma and their associate's degree, or at least college credits too, and it's all free. They don't have to pay for that, so, great program. So, again, how are we going to do this? Well, probably surveys, tracking student data. We tend to know where the students are going when they graduate, but what about a couple of years after they graduate? Did they stay at Michigan State? Did they finish? Did they graduate? What did they do after that? So, it'd be more like a five-year survey to check to see where they are after graduation. And then, also creating a database of our existing partnerships with setting annual benchmarks to check on our data. And then, Number 4.
You have a lot of faith in me. Hi. So, our fourth step was talking about creating sustainable relationships with families and volunteers to support those experiences. We do a lot of that at different levels. District-wide, we have our advisory committees. Building-specific, we have the PTAs and PTOs, which, you know, Jennifer and I have been involved in for years, and it's been amazing. At the classroom level, you know, they got a lot of parents to come in to help with field trips, the class events, they come in and do readings. We also have some bigger events, talking about some examples of activity-specific events, our Career Day, where we reach out to the community and our parents to come in and meet with our students. The Music Boosters is a really great organization that's very involved in supporting that music department. There's the sports clubs, and there are some parent-specific groups that support the kids in what they do and their activities. We also do a lot of community opportunities. So, we've done the Bridge to Civility, we did the Screenagers, we did the community event with Dr. Richard Lapchek, and similar to what Laura was talking about, some of our measurables are attendance at events, how many people are participating, and you're not surprised at the survey portion of this. I do think that the surveys are really important to get the feedback and head direction for the district. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. I worked with a really good group of people on Goal Number 3, and unfortunately, none of them could be here tonight, so you'll hear me drone on a little more than maybe the other two groups, but it was a really good group that really worked hard prior to the pandemic. And actually, we were a group that actually had most of our work done prior to that, so our work afterward was just to circle back and make sure that there weren't any things that we wanted to change. There weren't any things that we wanted to change, but there were some that we definitely wanted to emphasize, so I'll certainly highlight those things. But Goal Number 3 is basically to enhance a positive school environment that promotes student and staff well-being, satisfaction, and positive morale, and I think that that wording continues to work well for us. The Action Step Number 1 was to enhance a positive school environment that promotes student and staff well-being, satisfaction, and positive morale, and in this particular area, as far as action steps, we talked about safe, secure. In that previous action step, it used to mention safe and secure physical environments. We did speak a lot and added language about emotional environments as well. As far as process and procedure, we highlighted, again, ADA accessibility, strategic and mobile furnishing. Imaging, you hear a lot about that from the curriculum side of things, making sure that we are providing both windows and mirrors for our students and the materials that they see, representing inclusivity, diversity, and cultural responsibility, and then also emphasize safe and secure transportation. You've heard it several times already. As far as measurables, we talked about informed K-12 survey data, and I think, as one of the previous presenters mentioned, that survey data is really important to us. You'll see it a couple of times here. We also need to really be conscious that we're not surveying the same stuff over and over and over again, and I think that will be part of the work that we do administratively to make this happen. Also, talked about annual review of policies and procedures, and I think that's something that the Board of Education has engaged in. As far as Action Step 2, we talked about a culture of inclusivity within Celine area schools, and again, please keep in mind that this work started before the pandemic, and so, really proud of the work that that group did. But we talked about regular and ongoing culturally responsible, or responsive training, the importance of modeling culturally responsive behaviors, and emphasized continued implementation of early childhood special education. That was a focal point for this group as well. Here, we got a little more specific in terms of the data and talked about making sure that we were looking at disaggregated data, and it actually got into talking about surveying biannually so that we could actually make mid-year adjustments if we needed to, and then also monitoring PBIS data, which we currently do at the building levels with all of our teams. Action Step Number 3, we talked about fostering initiatives that enhance positive school, community environment, as well as student and staff well-being. And I think one of the things you're starting to see emerge here is that if Goal Groups 1 and 2 really are going well, that some of this stuff really does dovetail together very, very nicely. And so, we talked about providing a means for building-level socials committees and district-wide affinity groups, affirming student voice and choice, and the importance of continuing to do that, and actively supporting and connecting with all students, encouraging a culture of gratitude. And actually, it's funny to see that on there while we've got this Culture of Gratitude initiative going on right now with the holiday coming up. As far as measurables, we talked about forums, surveys, including students and staff, to make sure that we connect with everybody and faculty and staff. And one important emphasis point, you know, we recognized very early on that we have limited resources. We can't be all things to all people, and so, one of the things that we really want to focus on is connecting need to other available resources. If we can't be all things to all people, we can at least connect dots and help people, make sure that they get the resources that they need. And the last, our fourth action step, was to provide leadership development opportunities for staff and students, encouraging people to participate in leadership opportunities that align with their interests or need, and identifying issues that might create barriers and removing those when possible. I think that was really the emphasis here. We've always had a really robust offering of opportunities for students and staff, but at times, there may be obstacles that might be in the way, and so, we want to make sure that we can remove those when possible. We talked about developing an annual written outline of the stuff that is available. I think if you look at the high school as an example, sometimes you'll see clubs that get added that really look very similar to some other clubs, and so, making sure that people are aware of what we have available with regard to student and staff leadership opportunities, and then evaluate outcomes to make sure they're aligning with our district goals. Next, Steve's gonna bring it home with the important Goal Number 4.
And Kurt brought up a very good point there, that you're seeing survey data over and over again. The idea would be that we're developing a more comprehensive K-12 insight survey to really get at all this information, because if you think about what we're valuing here, yes, we're valuing standardized data, Acadients, FOTUS and PANEL, M-Step, SAT scores, but that's only capturing one element of, you know, growth and determining success of the district, and therefore, to really get at some of these other skills that we value, we do need to think differently about how we're gathering that information, but it's not as if, to Kurt's point, that we're gonna have 16 different surveys. We're just looking at a more comprehensive way to work with our survey company, K-12 Insight, to redevelop what used to be the culture survey that we used to send out to all students, staff, and faculty. So, it's a work in process, but we feel that that's a great way to gather that information. Before I start the finance goal, Miranda is on vacation, and I do a very well-deserved vacation, because people like Miranda or even Kurt, who work in departments, that they can't take vacation in the summer. HR deals with so much hiring, and, you know, finance is dealing with closing out the end of the year, finance moving into the next year, and now that Miranda did a great job finalizing the audit, this is a time when she can get away and have a well-deserved vacation. So, anyway, she coordinated Goal 4 and had a number of people provide support here, and they have redefined this goal as well. So, it talks about the general goal as demonstrating fiscal responsibility and the management of daily and future operations, decisions and planning to ensure the financial health and prosperity of the district to best support the success of the district's strategic goals. That's a mouthful. With that said, here's what all of that means. And I highlighted a couple, or underlined a few of the key phrases, because I think this is really important. This one, Action Step Number 1 in Goal 4, is really about these longer-term projections. How do we look, how are we better at getting at, well, what's gonna happen in three, four, and five years? And so, one of the key areas that we're looking at right now is staffing and enrollment, and looking at that connection between, you know, what's our staffing model look like based on enrollment trends? And I've had conversation with all of you before that we're seeing now an uptick in enrollment at our lowest levels, but a decline enrollment at our high school level in particular, largely based on that. I've said it many times, but 350 students coming in for a while in terms of the number of kindergartners coming in, and 450 students exiting. That has caught up with us a little bit, so we're trying to stabilize- That has caught up with us a little bit, so we're trying to stabilize enrollment moving forward. And we're looking closely at that, because we definitely want to make sure that we are continuing with a balanced budget, which is important to look at our overall structure moving forward. The next part is strategies to improve, sustain the overall fiscal health of the district. And that is to, I mean, we kind of lumped this idea of fund balance together with unexpected changes. It's important for districts to establish a fund balance to make sure that we are able to deal with an unexpected change and stay healthy enough in that area so that we can move forward. And so we talk a lot about how we are looking to analyze fund balance and also look at changes that we can predict so that we'll be prepared in the future for unforeseen changes or circumstances. And the last action step looks at ways we should better educate the community, because finance is, is confusing. School finance is very, very challenging. There's lots of moving parts constantly happening. And it's important that we get out in front of that. Miranda's done a nice job of, you know, putting together a fund balance visual on, on, on the website that kind of outlines how the fund balance is moving and the history of it in, in a way that is easier to understand. And also that's how do we get after it with social media and make sure that people are more invested in learning about the financial structure of the district. So what are the next steps to all of this? Well, we know it's a work in progress. And the next step is to update our website to be reflective of these updated four goals. And then the really important part is what's known as MYKIP, and that's the New Michigan Integrated Continuous Improvement Process. And what that means is it replaces an older system in Michigan, and it will provide the framework for us to develop the district improvement plan and the school improvement plans. And so the next step for us with our administrative team is to establish the timeline for more or less putting these four goals that are our newly-defined strategic framework into MYKIP, which is the Michigan Department of Education system we'll use for both our district improvement plan and our school improvement plans, which will all start rolling out in the spring. But another way we need to hold ourselves accountable here is to have quarterly reviews with our four-goal groups that, you know, we need to come back to revisit this on a regular basis so that we are checking benchmarks and determining, you know, are we measuring these goals properly? What do those, the survey results say? What are the changes we need to make? Because we do view this as a fluid process, because we want to be evolving as we move forward. And I just, this is just the visual of what MYKIP is. This is very important. When you look at what the purpose of MYKIP is, especially when you get into the second one, well, it talks about equitable opportunities. We've heard a lot about that tonight. But it says, "A continuous process of improvement that informs the way we work on a daily basis rather than being an annual event and a way to meet compliance requirements." Like, they're actually recognizing Michigan Department of Education, saying, "This used to be an exercise in compliance. We need it to be part of the fabric of your district, and that's what we want it to be too." Improvement processes that are integrated rather than isolated, continuous improvement targets that reflect areas that influence academic achievement rather than just academics by themselves. And you saw that in goals two, three, and four. Largely, goal one's our academic goal, but all three of the other goals are going to influence academic achievement in that way of integration. And then it talks about improvement plans that consider systems to support high-quality implementation of actions at high levels, student outcomes, and then understanding students through lenses that consider both assets and needs. So we feel confident that this is actually a very good direction for the Michigan Department of Education, because now we're able to develop plans that we actually can implement and want to implement. Okay, that's all up. Questions? And we may direct them to others who helped present. Susan?
Thank you. Thanks for everybody who was able to be here, and those who aren't here that helped with the 18 months ago and, and then currently, in bringing this all together. Let's have a couple, couple of questions, but I guess the bigger one is, will these groups now come together? I know that was kind of the plan previously, so I don't know if you all have done that, just with the, some overlapping to just...
Well, I think we've tried to do that already in the sense of we did, we did an evening where we had sort of a critique of all four goals with the people that have been helping with this to try to determine that there is some pass-through or integration of all four of them. So I feel like we've already gone through that process. I think the real key will be this, this concept of quarterly reviews to make sure that each of these groups are having ways to get back together and look at how progress is being made versus times in the past where districts have created improvement plans, but they aren't revisiting them enough to really check to make sure that the progress is being made or adjusting the plans or the goals if something's not working. I think that's another key point.
And just one more. If any, anybody from a group would like to share kind of the pre-work and then the post-work with incorporating, I think some of you touched on it, incorporating like the wellness, emotional health, that kind of thing. So I just was wondering if any of you found anything that needed to be like changed majorly in that, and how you worked with that?
Does anybody want to touch on that? Is Darcy, you wanna address it?
Sure. I would say that having started pre-pandemic and regathering, well, not post-pandemic, but a year and a half later, I was really impressed with how the, the staff came together and we were able to still use the foundation of what we were doing and continue the work fairly seamlessly. But it did give us a slightly different perspective, I'd say greater perspective, of what we were looking at and what we were trying to accomplish. So, you know, and like Alex Shuko was in my group originally, and he's gone, but I think the staff transitioned seamlessly. I was very impressed with the work that they did.
Oh yeah, I just wanted to next example.
Oh, great.
Thank you.
Jenny?
I have a couple of questions, and, and they might be things that we revisit, you know, in future meetings. So one, I wonder a little bit, it seems like for a little while, there was a little bit of like almost a stagnation in some of the housing development. We didn't have a lot of new neighborhoods going up, and so now we're seeing that come up again. And I know when I was teaching here, the first decade I was teaching here, it seemed like there was a new neighborhood every year. So now that we're seeing some of the development west of town and even right in town off of Maple, I wonder if there are projections or if there's any way of kind of thinking about how that might, like the kind of housing, is it going to be family housing, and, and if that will impact enrollment like it did a decade ago? So that was one thing I was wondering about. I don't know if you wanna...
Yeah, I mean, I do think we look at, we do look at enrollment with family housing price points, because we know that, you know, if entry-level homes are $800,000, that's, that's a different market than potentially a younger family who's bringing in kids at the kindergarten level. So we are looking at that and do feel confident that this is going to yield, you know, certainly younger families and potentially more families with school-age kids coming in to start at the lower level and move its way up. I mean, how that translates and how much time that takes for that to happen? Like I said, we are starting to see the trend be that our increases are coming at the lower elementary levels, which is largely a good thing. Yet our, you know, enrollment losses are more at the middle school and particularly the high school. So I do think the trend pattern is that we are seeing some of that growth at the lower level, which is probably better than the opposite way that we've been experiencing for a while in terms of building back up.
I guess my next question, I think we've kind of talked a little bit about this when we've had finance reports, but those classes that are smaller at the middle school and high school level have always been smaller than, say, for example, the class that graduated last year and, and previous graduated classes. Is that correct?
Well, there, yeah, I mean, for a while, we were in that, so we had some really large high school classes upwards of 500 kids at one point. And then we've been declining in terms of graduating classes moving from, you know, 470, 450. So, so now we are moving forward with some of the classes being, you know, 400 or under.
Say, for example, like the class of 2025 has, has pretty much stayed stable since they were in kindergarten?
Yeah, I mean, there is some movement often into high school, particularly at the ninth grade level. We've seen a little bit of a slowdown in that area. And sometimes the transition grades, you see more enrollment, sixth grade, ninth grade. Sometimes in ninth grade, it's because, I'll say, you know, students may go to a school like Emerson and then, and then come into the district for high school. We're still seeing some of that, just not as much of that in that, in that area to stabilize the smaller classes.
Okay. I also, one, one thing I just wanted to, to say, I guess, something for us to consider is that there are, when we were talking a little bit about student leadership and student leadership opportunities and maybe creating like a list of like opportunities. One thing I would like for, for us to carefully ponder is that there are some kids who are, who are born leaders, like they're told that, like they were born leaders, and they have just a natural ability to step up to the plate and volunteer for things and, or maybe be asked to do things. I have a, a child who does that, and then I have another child who doesn't see themselves as much as having those attributes, so maybe wouldn't seek out those things, but when asked to participate in things, lights up and thrives. So I just hope that we're, like potentially, we're seeking out those kids who could benefit from additional opportunities for leadership instead of the same kids being, you know, because they are, their bend is more in that. So I know we have an, an abundance of leadership opportunities, so helping kids to see themselves in those roles who might not see themselves. And then I wondered a little bit about, there was talk about the fund balance, and I know in the last few years, there was at least one quote-unquote buyout or incentive. Do we see an increase in the fund balance when those things happen, or does it take longer or more for that to happen? When we see like teachers with longevity retire and they're no longer in the system and they're hired, the replacer, new hires are lower on the, on the pay scale?
Yeah, a lot of that depends on, you know, how much the buyout is for and how long it's extended, you know, how much you're paying out the first year versus, you know, and is it a three-year buyout? Or, you know, so I think there are a lot of factors involved in that. And, you know, ultimately, fiscally, we've debated on whether buyouts are a good strategy. You know, there's, there's pros and cons to that in terms of, you know, that being a drag on the system at certain points versus that immediate need to save money. So there, there is different, different opinions on, on when you would do that, you know, how often you would do that kind of thing.
Okay. Then my last question or comment, I guess there've been a mix of questions and comments, is staff awareness of the strategic framework. I know that you said that this is going to be translated into district improvement and school improvement, and that goal groups are going to be meeting again. And I know we had some staff representation on those committees, but I also know that we have individual school improvement committees in schools. And so I wonder how, what is the method of communication? Will those school improvement committee members join the strategic framework goal groups? Or will, will somehow there be some flow of communication to them so that there's an awareness of, you know, if, if it's a community coming together to work on this group, how is that communication happening so that it comes through to the staff who is then implementing?
Right, yeah, that's important that the staff, you're right, staff are those that actually implement the, the framework. So right now, which has been nice, Michelle Checkowitz and Teresa Steger, two of our administrators, have actually been leading the process of understanding this new change with the MYKIP framework and that they're going to help our buildings transition so that we do have a way to communicate this out to staff as we're developing the school improvement plan, which ultimately should drive goals and objectives within each, each school. I think one of the things that we're going to be cognizant of is there still needs to be a level of autonomy. For example, Woodland Meadows is involved in the Leader in Me program. So we can't create a school improvement plan that does not allow for any autonomy for some of the unique differences that play out in each elementary school, especially at those, you know, the, the young fives, the third-grade buildings, when we have three of those. You talk about heritage, it's one building, same with middle school, same with high school. But at the early elementaries, we are gonna have to make sure that we are communicating. Now, what are the, what are sort of the non-negotiables within the four goals within the framework? And how do those translate into the school improvement plan? And then what are some of the unique differences that allow some autonomy, especially in those young fives, the third-grade buildings?
And I think, I think just to respond to that a little bit, I think it's really important that, that, I guess I should reword my original, that communication goes to them, but also that that communication is coming back to us. And I, I think the surveys are one way, but sort of that immediate practitioner feedback from staff and students really can help as we're moving forward and implementing, implementing these things. So thank you to everyone who worked on this. I know I enjoyed getting to know goal group one. Shout out to my friends. So thanks.
Yeah, great. Other questions?
I'll, I'll say a few things. So, oh, go ahead. Oh, okay. Thanks, Michael. So first of all, I'd just say thank you for getting back to this. There's been so much going on, and rightly so. We've been, we've been so focused on getting the kids back to school and back to learning. So I'm really glad to see this focus, and I'm, I'm very excited with the quote that you, you stated, you know, that this is the, this, this can be the way that we work on a daily basis rather than kind of an annual event or compliance review. And I'm really excited to make sure that, you know, the board is supporting alignment in our conversations and agendas with these strategic framework goals. So I, I think that that's very exciting. This is the foundation of Celine, so I, I really appreciate the work that everybody did. A, a couple of things really resonated with me in, in some of the groups, so I just wanted to, to mention that. I, I heard relationships, partnerships with the community several times, maybe not as much as surveys, but, but, but it was really high up there, and that's on my list too. So I appreciate that. Goal group number one, when you talked about using tech responsibly, thank you. As a parent, that comes up a lot, and I think it's a really, really important thing that we talk to our, our students and our children about that and what that means, because as we are promoting these, these future, future leaders and future students, whether they're going into college or the trades or the service or whatever they decide to do, understanding that it's just such a fabric, a piece of the fabric of their environment right now. I think that that's incredibly important, so I appreciate that. I also really liked talking about no front of the room. And I'm curious if, if that's also tied to increased learning retention? If, if you're, you're involving students versus lecturing at students? I know you would know this more than me, but I've read that, that when you're involving and you're demonstrating and you're interactive, it's, you're increasing that, that learning retention, so that, that sounds good to me. And I liked hearing about data. I, I think that that's something that we should be looking at a little bit more, so I, I appreciate all of those things. My question is, you mentioned the spring, and I was going to ask about timelines. And I was gonna ask about surveys, because obviously, data is extremely important. Survey fatigue is real also, and so I want to be cognizant of what we're asking our community members to do and maybe asking our parents and guardians and community members. So you mentioned, mentioned the spring. Is the intention kind of to have some type of baseline survey in the spring that encompasses a lot of the questions that are on each of the action steps? That, that would be my overall question, like what, what's next after this? And I, I do really like the quarterly review idea as well.
Yeah, right. That, that's the idea, that we would do an annual survey, which we, we were, again, we, we used to call this the K-12 Insight Culture Survey, and we were doing that annually and then took a break when COVID started and said that, you know, families and students and teachers and staff were focused on other things. And so we want to revisit that, but redo that survey to make sure that it does incorporate, you know, elements of academic questions, but also questions about our compass, questions about... SEL support, some questions about DEI-related types of questions. However, I will, I do want to point out that we're also right now implementing a DEI survey. That's something that we're trying to get baseline information on and do that every couple of years. So that would not necessarily be an annual survey. We're going to gather more, more specific focused questions in that area. Whereas this annual survey in the spring is to try to encompass a broad range of questions that would support these four goal areas. And it would just be one annual survey. So we have a group working with K-12 Insight right now to establish those different types of questions, uh, that will support all of this.
Yeah, I had, uh, first of all, of course, everyone else has said it. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Well done. So for each of the groups, I have a few observations, things that I'm really going to be focusing on as, as we go forward and, uh, not evaluating you by any means, but, but really looking forward to. So Emily Sickler's group, Goal One. Um, I'm curious, uh, how we define distance learning versus the emergency, uh, remote online learning that we went through. Uh, so I'm really curious to see how you all refine and define that. I appreciate the surveys. I appreciate the safe, you mentioned the safe use of technology. And also, um, I'm curious about how you're going to go beyond that into digital citizenship and the ethical use of technologies. This is all great. Anna's group, Goal Two, uh, the partnerships. I absolutely love the idea of a database of existing, uh, partners that we have. At this point, I haven't seen that we have something yet. Um, and the first two groups, doesn't WISD already survey students or figure out, track students three, four, five, as many as seven years out? They get information from the colleges and universities. And we've had presentations by, by Dr. Norman here a few times. So that's data that-
I can respond to that. They, yeah, it's a senior exit, exit survey. It then got, it goes into how long does it take for kids to finish their degree, if at all? And, 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 and what we're talking about that takes that a step further is yes, we care about how students finish up, whether they finish trade school, whether they, you know, finish going to a four-year school and it takes them five years or even six. But a missing element that we need to gather is after they're done with that, what kind of skills do they have? And did the school, did our school district prepare them for those next steps beyond college or their, um, you know, trade school? Do, we, we want to gather information about how well are you prepared for your career or whatever it is that you're doing next? And that's the information that we don't have, that we do want to gather.
That, that's great. I'm glad you're, you're trying to dig that up. That, I'm just, while you were describing it, I was going down the rabbit hole of how one would track and keep track of students as they, they leave and go into the world. But I'm sure we've got plans.
Well, I can talk about that strategy.
Well, we could. Well, okay. Well, it, it sounds like a strategy. It does sound like a lot of work. Um, I appreciate Curdellis as your group. Um, and I, I'm really looking forward to seeing how you unpack cultural responsibility. That was one of the headings, uh, that you had. And removing, um, barriers to both students and staff, uh, leadership, it, leadership, um, opportunities. And Dr. Latch, uh, yeah, I'm really glad you mentioned looking at other forms of data. Yeah, surveys are great, aren't they? Wonderful. But you're right. I'm glad we're looking at other forms of data. And I just wanted to thank everybody for their work. And, and in anticipation of survey, survey exhaustion and that sort of thing, you, you, you do know there are so many other sets of data out there. And I'm just delighted that we're going to be tapping into as many as we can. So thanks for all your hard work and efforts.
Yeah, I, I would just go on. We, we keep talking about surveys and data, all of that. To me, that's the most important and the most difficult thing with all of the, that I've heard here is how to assess that, that, those measurables. Not to get false reads, which sometimes you can get, but that, that's going to be where you really have to, to focus on, on, on how to, how to assess all of those measurables. Whether they be surveys or data, there's, there's a lot of information out there. But really, that, I mean, that's going to determine the tweaks that you make. I'm glad to hear you're doing it on a quarterly basis. It's, it's really, as you say here, it's a continuous process of improvement. But really, you've got to focus on those, those measurables. And what are they, what are they really telling you?
Well, I'll also still say that I've, I've repeated it many times at the board table. The most important thing that we can do is focus on early literacy and the data around that. Because if our kids are proficient at reading and writing as they exit third grade, it's going to set them up for success in all of these other areas. So that is a real key academic area that we're going to look at, specifically our cadence data, which is measuring, um, how students are doing with these benchmark skills. And in addition to things like Fanta's and Penelope assessments, which are having teachers get some real, um, uh, specific data on individual readers and writers so that they can propel more with the individualized curriculum. So we don't want to lose sight that that still would be the most important data set that we're paying attention to, even though we're looking at other ways to gather information in these other goal areas.
All right. And I just have one question, because the rest of you are amazing. So I wonder how long are we committed to these four goal areas? Like how long is this process? We start going to evaluate it quarterly, and then are we going to revisit the goals entirely in one year? When will be our next timeline for revisiting?
Well, one of the things that's good, and Kurt was pointing out some of this, these, these goals, although being revised, are the same goals that we've been operating with for four and five, six years. In other words, we, we've had an academic goal, we've had a community goal, a, a culture, you know, social emotional learning goal and a financial goal. So although we're making adjustments to, you know, recognize how, you know, education is evolving, we've gone through a couple pandemic schooling years, the, the framework of these four goals, I actually don't anticipate changing a whole lot, uh, between now and the next three, four, or five years. It's, it's tweaking them. So you're making those adjustments properly. Okay.
All right.
Well, thank you all for, uh, participating and helping. And, um, you certainly are, are free to go in terms of, um, you know, to start your break. But we appreciate everybody helping with the, with all four of the goals.
Yeah. Thank you to everyone that came and, and that wasn't able to come tonight. Thank you. Um, Steve, would you just like to stay up there?
I'm just going to stay right up here. Yep.
All right, great. Whenever you're ready.
Oh, clicker. Okay, yeah. Thank you very much. Okay. So Continue to Learn tonight is going to be, um, some new information as it relates to COVID-19 protocols and next steps. But it's also going to be looking at sixth grade. So you're starting to see a pattern. We're focused on transition years and buildings. We started with kindergarten, then we were fourth grade, then we were sixth grade. So you'll likely see ninth grade at our next, um, Continue to Learn presentation, as we wanted to focus in on what does it look like when we enter, uh, our different buildings. Okay. With that said, here's where we're at right now, um, in terms of Washtenaw, high transmission rate, uh, yet, you know, when we compare what's happening in other counties surrounding us, our positivity rate is a far amount, is fair amount lower than, than most of the counties surrounding us. And even that case rate per one hundred thousand is lower than a lot of surrounding counties. With that said, we're still in that high transmission rate. And we've talked about how, um, you know, we are seeing a lot of our hospitals that are seeing a lot of, um, COVID-19 patients right now. In terms of our dashboard, our dashboard does have a fair number of those students and staff on it. Um, now, this is all relative. We're, I want to kind of compare to where we were last spring. If you can recall, we were going back to more in-person instruction after spring break. And our dashboard had many, many more, uh, students and staff on it at that point. Uh, the other element here is that a lot of these students in quarantine, as we've talked a lot about, are in that test to stay mode, uh, that they are testing three times a week, able to stay in school, still meeting our goals of keeping students in in-person instruction five days a week as much as possible. I have gotten a fair number of emails, well, three this week, uh, from parents saying that they feel that the district has done a good job of, um, keeping students in school. And even some of the parents that said, you know, my student, uh, was quarantined, but they, they would test to stay and feel like that strategy is working, um, even in this uptick of cases, uh, that we're experiencing in Washtenaw County and across Michigan. So as we move forward, a couple updates as it relates to COVID-19. So we did host a, a five to eleven-year-old clinic on November sixteenth. It didn't, it didn't go as well as we'd like. We used a, a third-party vendor. Uh, we did contact, uh, Washtenaw County Health Department and did talk to Ruth Crowd about that. She helps lead the department and said, because it was ultimately, um, their decision as to who the district would use for these providers. And, you know, we simply want to, want to get better at this. We were apologizing to the community because what happened at this clinic was there were parents that showed up and were waiting an, an hour and a half to, to get, uh, their, their children vaccinated. And, and for some of them, it, it didn't happen. And so they had to, uh, resort to going to other places. So as they come back on December seventh, for, um, others who would like to take advantage of the second clinic, um, we're in communications with LTS, that's the vendor, to say, hey, we, we need to make sure that doesn't happen again. Um, we want to make sure our, our families have a good experience and that they're able to walk in and have a relatively, um, stress-free, uh, opportunity to get kids vaccinated. And so they're, they're, uh, discussing putting out a survey to see, you know, how many, how many families are still interested in December seventh so that they can make sure that they do have enough vaccine on hand for that. Now, another bullet I put down here is Washtenaw County Health Department Superintendent's call from last week. So I'll be honest in that we, as superintendents in Washtenaw County, are definitely talking to the health department about COVID fatigue and next steps moving forward. And when we say next steps moving forward, we mean, well, what happens after our five to eleven-year-olds have an opportunity to be vaccinated and they would be considered fully vaccinated? So in essence, we're talking about what happens when we get back from winter break into January. Um, one of the, one of the struggles we're having right now is that our district nurses, our building principals, our secretaries, they are spending a lot of time on contact tracing, quarantining, and, um, that, a lot of phone calls. So the question is, is, is there a point where COVID-19 becomes like we do with pertussis, for example, where we send out a, a letter that says there's a case of COVID-19 and that others in the classroom, um, watch for symptoms, but are not necessarily quarantined? Now, we're not at that point yet, but that is some of the discussions that we're starting to have. Because I think all of us do want to talk about, you know, what are the next steps? Is there an end game with schools in terms of, you know, moving forward? And I guess I'll say the term operationalizing COVID-19. Uh, so that, that's been the latest discussion. No, no firm answers or anything, but I did want to update the board that that is, um, that's part of the discussion we had last week. And so we'll keep moving with that. Okay. So now we're moving into our sixth grade presentation. And again, we talk about the building goals for the year, always focusing on the compass. How do we personalize educational experiences? How do we support our students' social emotional wellness? And how do we focus in on real-world experiences? So we want to keep focusing on that as we look at these presentations. So it's a very nice presentation put together by Laura Lindsay and, and their team at the middle school and talking about their common phrase, respectful, responsible, and kinder than necessary. So like the high school does link for ninth graders, the si- the middle school does web or where everyone belongs. It's the same concept. You're transitioning students in for, uh, a transition that, you know, students are coming out of heritage, or at least most of them are. And then the idea here is you, you take students that are, you know, older in seventh and eighth grade, they act as mentors, they come in and they help students get, um, acclimated to the middle school and an orientation program. We also have some new teachers on hand. We have a lot of new staff. Um, Kurt sent out a newsletter earlier in the week showing the over seventy-some-odd new staff members coming in. It's a lot, a lot of onboarding, a lot of, um, orientation for new team members. And really, throughout this year, even though it's been challenging, uh, our new staff's doing a great job. In terms of diverse classrooms, at sixth grade, we do start to offer different types of configurations for our classrooms in that we have five of the two teacher teams, kind of that team teaching concept. We have some self-contained rooms, some that are focused on using Google Classroom. We have some summit support and that, uh, that bridge between elementary and middle school. How do we transition into students coming from an elementary environment into the middle school? Sixth grade still operates more like elementary than it does seventh and eighth grade, uh, in terms of switching classes every hour. So that's what we mean by bridge. In terms of learning spotlights, here's where we get into some of the hands-on learning and some of the, uh, real-life learning. A strong Project Lead the Way program where it looks at some real-life scientific and STEM and STEAM challenges. Uh, the sixth grade's been doing this for years, a, a project-based learning activity on national parks. And they've also reached out to local printing companies to have field trips into, um, you know, printing out, uh, booklets to advertise for their national parks project. And then also a really important part is the classroom libraries and how they are really doing a great job at the middle school, specifically diversifying the books that are there and available for our students. And one of the things that's new that we're starting to transition to is, um, you know, students, uh, in terms of, uh, large groups going into Canada right now is not, is not feasible. So we are working on a, a sixth grade trip to Chicago. We've actually done this before. If you recall back in the days of SARS, we did, we did go to Chicago. And, you know, one of the things that is really beneficial for our kids is that camaraderie of being together and, um, you know, experiencing different places. And yes, Chicago with lots of great, great things to do. We feel like they will have a great experience with this in terms of another cross-curricular opportunity. In terms of electives, um, music, uh, students attend every day this year in orchestra, band, and choir, and then move on to a second elective rotation in terms of PE, art, and world cultures. Here's some of the people that also really make it happen around the building. Our media center, Mrs. Block, Mrs. Voight, done a terrific job of making that space really accessible. So more kids are using the space in the media center than ever before. And what they have specifically done with diverse books has been, um, it's really changed what's, what's happening in, in the media center in terms of opportunities. In terms of our counselors and social workers, we talk a lot about the importance of the great work they do. And you know Mr. Stemic, he's, he's a character. But anyway, so I'll just give you an example of, uh, some of the great things they've done. They've, they've reached out. And when, when we had students that were all virtual, they were going to the doors of the all-virtual students and dropping them a goodie bag or just touching base with them because they recognize they need to maintain, uh, that focus on SEL. So it's Tara and Matt. And then in addition to our wonderful social workers, Rachel and Andrea, uh, they've really done a terrific job. Um, you know, Laura and Lindsay would say, we've certainly worked through some behavior challenges the middle school. I equate a lot of that to transitioning back into, uh, five days a week of in-person instruction in a time of kids' lives where socially, that's a really important part of middle school. We talk about sixth graders who are now eighth graders, who, you know, it's two years since the, this span of really connecting with their friends. So everybody in the middle school is kind of trying to find their place. And we're still working through a lot of that. And, um, our counselors and social workers and our building principals are really doing a terrific job with all of that. So that's the Continue to Learn Plan. Some questions on COVID and/or sixth grade? Yes?
I have two questions. One on COVID, uh, the COVID plan and specifically the vaccination clinic. So I, I did go there with my son with the intention of getting vaccinated, getting him vaccinated, but it didn't, didn't work out. And I do have talked to several parents, one who had to wait for four hours that night, which is just, um, a lot. So I'm wondering if one of the options, you mentioned sending out a survey for getting an idea of how many parents might be coming or how many children might be coming to get vaccinated. I'm wondering if there may be time slots that could be made available so that there could be signups or even a range to say, you're, you know, this group, you're part of the five to six PM group or whatever, you know, just breaking it up a little bit because it was, it was overwhelming. The cafeteria was just packed with families.
Yeah, right. Yeah. People have suggested, do we have like staging areas to have people come in and then wait? And then when, when your turn is ready? We have gotten a number of suggestions. And Nurse Hurry is working with LTS to, um, make sure that our next opportunity- And Nurse Hurry is working with LTS to make sure that our next opportunity goes smoother. I mean, I know that she, she did feel bad because she was there. But to some degree, there was only so much you could do with, with limited vaccine. And also, you know, trying to maintain the level of, you know, the number of people who had, had shown up, even though we had communicated to LTS that we expected a large crowd because we had seen that in the past when we had opened up our clinics for, you know, 12 and up. And, and even before that, when we were doing, you know, high school students. So, it, it was an unfortunate situation that we, we definitely need to improve on. Washtenaw County Health Department was made aware. They said they were making calls too because we, we want to make sure we have a smoother experience for December 7th.
Great.
So, you had another question too.
Yes. Next question is about summit. So, you listed some of the options for sixth graders. And wondering how families can be better made aware of their options for, you know, between Google Classroom and Summit. There, I've definitely noticed there's some confusion around that and parents kind of talk to each other, well, have you done summit? What is it really? And I don't really understand it. So, helping families that are moving into that sixth-grade year better understand those options.
Yeah, and I think Laura and Lindsay are on to that in terms of knowing that there does need to be more communication, more options in terms of coming, you know, as they, as they transition into that leadership role, kind of learning what's happening with the summit program and how can it be offered and where and when? And, and some of that communication will, you know, they'll definitely be working on that.
Thank you.
Do you want to, yeah, do you want to go ahead and do it, Laura?
So, we are very keen on that. And so, what's going to happen is when we do orientation for the fifth to sixth-grade students coming in, we're actually going to present it that night. So, last year, we did a separate presentation and we noticed that there was less participation in that separate presentation. So, we're just going to do it all in one night when we know we have an active audience. And then, also traditionally, our summit kids in sixth grade have gone to Heritage. And so, that was always a big thing is that when the kids came back, they said, oh, there's this program called Summit. And so, the timing of that needs to be, that timing will be important because if the kids go first, then they will be talking about it hopefully to their parents who will come to our orientation.
Thank you, Laura.
I have a follow-up question for Laura possibly. I was actually going to ask about summit too. So, thanks Candace. I was just wondering what, what the general appetite is for, for summit this year because I, I've, I've seen it over the years and I, I know coming out of COVID, we, we all had a little bit of Zoom fatigue, right? So, I was just wondering, you know, what's the appetite for, for the programming? How are we staffing it, you know, enrollments and things like that? And I, I like the question about thinking about how do we communicate to others coming up what their options are? And then, a follow-up question to that would be for Dr. Lodge on Lincoln Learning. Also, if we could kind of talk about what the appetite for like platform-based learning or distance learning is right now in the district?
Sure. I think what happened last year was that, you know, the kids went down. We had a, we had an orientation. We talked about summit. And then, it's literally based on numbers. I think now, we're going to have a lot of kids that have gone through the program who love it. And so, now their siblings will say, well, we like it. We want to go through it as well. I think there, there is definitely going to be some of that. We flexed between anywhere between, this year, it's four classrooms. Last year, we had six classrooms of, of summit. What I have learned about summit is it really is a platform. I think the, the misnomer about summit is that, you know, the kids are on the computer all the time and they're just, they're learning on their own. Not really. Like, there is a teacher who is teaching. And where all of that is in the platform is, is organized that way. But there really is an instructor who teaches and then it's a matter of then what you do independently. There is some independent work time with summit. There's no doubt about that. But it's not as, you know, computer-focused, if you will, than, than what I think a lot of people think. And so, I think making certain we have a message that's representative of what summit really is, is super, super important. So, then as a matter, like after that, it is a matter of, of student choice. I mean, we have teachers who have, have been trained in summit. Right now, we have, I'm trying to think, seven in the building. So, if next year, a group of students come through and, you know, we want to have seven classrooms of summit, we do have the capability of doing that, the capacity to do that. That make sense? Okay, yeah.
Okay, so, their question about, about Lincoln Learning. And this is something that Kara could potentially elaborate on further that, because she's helped to set up the platform and work with the families on this. I'd sent a board update that, that was showing that primarily, most of the students are planning to transition back into the classrooms once their kids are fully vaccinated. There are a few that want to continue on with, with the Lincoln Learning platform. And Kara is coordinating that so that they can do so. So, I guess you asked what, what's the appetite? I'd say the vast majority are moving towards in-person learning. I don't know. Do you want to add anything to that?
Sure. The Lincoln Learning platform is a very different platform than the Summit platform because it is asynchronous and there's no live teaching and no live teacher associated with it. So, the families who have elected to come back, we are welcoming them back with open arms and transitioning them in. The families who have elected to stay with Lincoln Learning, they're staying, from my understanding, for the most part, based upon the comments they've left, with health reasons in mind, not because of a, a passion for the platform. So, we talk about platform-based learning. We would explore different types of platforms that were available if that was something that we wanted to look at more deeply. Lincoln Learning has some benefits and has served a really good space for our students who wanted to stay virtual this year. However, I think if they had the choice for health reasons too, everybody would be returning.
Perfect. Thank you all.
Jenny, Brad, Jen?
Brad, go ahead. All right, I have a few things. So, number one, I have a son in Summit. So, I will agree with that misnomer, right? The idea, you know, I, my son has these power focus areas that he meets, but he does that in collaboration with instructors who are, who are passionate or are there and who are working with them. And so, I do think that that misnomer is out there, that you're on your own, you know? So, first of all, if there's anybody in our community, anybody wants to talk to him, I'd be glad to talk to you about my experience as a parent. Obviously, Laura and the teachers are going to, Mrs. Washington and the teachers are going to be a lot better at giving you more of the ins and outs and nuts and bolts. But I, I applaud, I applaud the idea of doing it on the same night. Because I could tell you with, with my son, we kind of locked into it. And so, the reality for us is that by combining those two nights together, it's just, it's not another night where parents have to go and seek out information so they can make a decision. I think that they're more informed just having it all right there. And now, I, I'm fully informed in that moment. So, I was happy about that. I, I noted, I note the Chicago trip. That, what a cool, you know, those are experiences for our kids that they remember for the rest of their lives. And, and so, I'm excited that they're having that opportunity. I also note heck a lot of planning and effort and, you know, things that go into those things to coordinate it, to fundraise it, to do all of that kind of stuff. So, but I applaud us for thinking outside the box and trying to provide that opportunity for kids because I know we're nervous all in COVID times and doing these things and, you know, but, but I know that for the social, we're talking a lot about social, emotional health of our students. And I think that, you know, if we could do those things safely, I think they're important for our kids. Dr. Lodge, do you mind defining, I, I, as an educator, I have a pretty good feel that, you talk about a self-contained classroom. Can you define that for our community real quick?
Yeah, it's largely that, that one teacher delivers all the core content area, math, science, social studies, reading, language arts.
Do they get assistance from like a, someone who is a special, special education support, that kind of thing in that regard?
If, if students in the classroom needed special education support, they might get a teacher consultant that's in there on a regular basis. Some will have peer educators. I mean, it really is the same as team teachers. It's just one teacher delivering the core content versus team teaching might have it divided up where one teacher is doing social studies in ELA and then the kids switch to go to math and science to the other teacher. And then, obviously, when you get into seventh and eighth grade, it really is departmentalized. Outside of Summit, you, you talk about departmentalized. You know, there's a science teacher that teaches four sections of science.
Right.
That's different than the self-contained teacher.
And actually, to back you up too, on Summit, my son still leaves the team too to go get advanced math support. So, like, he could still get those experiences within the Summit platform. So, I don't mean to go backwards, but. Test to stay. You talked about capacity limits, right? Like, have we had any conversations about being able to properly and adequately provide that testing-to-stay option? And are we close to being at like maximum capacity for our nursing staff and our people who are doing those things?
Yeah, we, we are. I mean, we are close to capacity. Yeah, we brought in additional nursing support. But one of the things that Kurt and Mr. Ellis is doing is meeting with another vendor, a third-party vendor that could potentially provide that service if we felt that we no longer could do it because we are getting close to that point. And that again is why we talk about, well, what happens when we get, you know, beyond the new year? We're now going to be in a phase where those who have wanted to be vaccinated could have been vaccinated. I think the question is, what does happen with test to stay? Are we continuing with that? Are we, are, are we quarantining all close contacts? I mean, there's going to be a lot of discussion between now and January as to what that looks like.
And then, the last item I have is just like, is a comment. If people waited four hours for a vaccine that night, I, I'm sorry that that didn't happen for them. And I hope that we did everything we could to, to assist them, to, to find alternate site, to, to figure that out going forward. But I'm sorry we missed the mark on that.
Yeah. Jenny? Yep, Jenny?
So, I, I'm wondering, the school districts, the nine school districts in Washtenaw County are meeting with the health department and having those conversations about what, what our next steps might be, what happens next. But we also know that there are counties that are similar to ours. So, I just wonder if there's been communication about like how Kent County or Ingham County or Oakland County, county, counties that have a similar population, similar number of districts, health departments. It just seems kind of this year different than last year where the state health and human services isn't really guiding that. So, is there collaboration so that we're not having, I, I mean, I, I'm imagining how fatiguing that is for our nurses, for our superintendents making those decisions and for our health departments, honestly. So, I'm hoping that there's some collaboration or some models that we can look at to, to kind of have a bigger, a larger pool of brainstorming, I guess you could say.
Yeah, I, it's very confusing to be perfectly honest. I'll give you an example. In Washtenaw-Leninston, these are, the, the oversight is by the same general health director.
And the guidance is completely different.
Both counties are doing very different things as it relates to COVID strategy. And so, you know, as superintendents, we're looking around at the different counties. Everybody's doing something different or, or, you know, many differences. And, you know, it's, it's very difficult to look at any one model because they are different. But to your point, we are trying to compare. We are trying to look at, yeah, what's happening in Oakland County, what's happening in Wayne County as it relates to strategy, COVID protocols. And then, again, it's the what's next. Because the what's next is what all of us want to talk about as we are all in that COVID fatigue mode. I think it's, it's clear.
My next question, I guess, comment might be that for Laura and Lindsay, that when you are doing that Summit presentation, I know Summit was brand-new when my kids were in middle school and it has evolved and has, has, you know, grown and adapted as, as it's progressed. So, I'd love to hear some of, some more about that specifically, because it's my lane, but specifically about what the curriculum is. Like, I understand that the teachers are teaching, but does the platform provide a different curriculum and, and that, and that sort of thing? So, I just, I'm hoping that maybe when, in the springtime, when you're getting ready to deliver that information for parents that, that you invite us or that you send us the presentation, because I'd love to learn more about that too, especially the changes that have, you know, happened since four or five years ago when it started.
Because it has definitely evolved.
Yes, absolutely. And, and I think when Drew and Laney were there, it just was so unknown. And it was largely like, oh, it's student-paced and it's more independent. And so, for kids who were more independent or more, it seemed to fit, it seemed to, that misnomer, misnomer has stayed even though the program has evolved to be more accessible for all of our students. So, I'd love that. And then, lastly, in terms of the trips, I think everyone has said like how, how amazing those are. And I know my twins and my oldest experienced Toronto and then my oldest experienced Washington DC. But my younger two missed Washington DC because of the pandemic and that is a void. They talk about that all the time. So, I know that those trips really have a community atmosphere. I think last year, even during graduation, people were talking about the memories that were made on those trips and the connections that they made with students and teachers. So, I'm glad to see that that's coming back. I hope that maybe, maybe down the road, and I've talked to Mrs. Dawson a little bit about what we can do with that, with those classes who maybe missed some of those opportunities to create some of that community, shared experience that is so important to an educational experience that Celine has to offer.
Thanks. Susan?
So, I've been, my feet have been going because everybody's talking about Summit and I have a child in Summit as well. So, I wanted to like hop in and answer questions. But, so my son's in sixth-grade Summit. And actually, we had a webinar that came out to help make, or help us decide which platform we wanted, fifth going into sixth. And that was super helpful, especially when the deadline came and I'm like, oh, no, we didn't choose. And so, I re-watched the webinar because it was, you know, at, at our disposal. And, you know, I know there's many types of learners. And I feel like this, this idea that yes, they have to be, you know, already like self-motivated and whatever. But I, I don't think that's the case. I, I noticed that, you know, there's, there's kids who can move forward with some of it and then other ones who can stay back until they, you know, are an expert in that area and then ready to take a test or whatever. So, I think it teaches children skills who may not have had that before. And also, you know, helping, helping with those who are maybe more advanced. So, I, I praise, praise the Summit program. And then, the Bridge program, my son also participated in, which I thought was a great opportunity given that, you know, fifth going into sixth, it's been so different and they didn't have opportunities that previous, you know, fifth graders transitioning had. He would ta, tell other kids that they did work, so he didn't like it. But, but he still, he still talks about it and the web orientation as well. He, he still talks about that. And he's like, I'm going to be a web leader. And I'm like, okay. So, he really, you know, he sees who was at that orientation and, you know, who teachers were. And so, I thought that was really great, you know, going into this new environment. And the teachers did an awesome job at organizing that. Okay, so I have two questions for you based on, I guess, so talking about like the contract tracing for the administrators and Nurse Hurry. I'm just curious where we have funds? I know we, we're having trouble filling positions and stuff, but is it possible to, to use funds or consider funds for providing some of that support to those people?
Yeah, it would be. That, that, that's related to what I was talking about with, you know, Kurt reaching out to see, you know, what would it take if we need the support to have a third-party vendor come in and provide some healthcare professionals to either do additional testing for students or staff or help with reporting and that kind of thing? And yeah, we could be using some of that additional funding to support that. I think it's a matter of when is that point where we potentially need more? At this, at this moment, they've been managing. But it's getting close to, hey, they're not, you know, if, if we get, you know, I guess, I'd say an even larger spike coming back. It may be that, hey, yeah, we, we need additional support in to, to manage it. But again, it's But again, it's what then what's going to happen when we get back in January? Do these protocols look the same? And so there's a lot of moving parts right now. But just to answer your question, yeah, there would be some funds to provide additional support.
Okay, yeah, I can't imagine like what the the admin and everybody have to do, like drop everything and then contact everybody. So I'm sure that's super stressful. And then I know, uh, so as far as as we, I guess this is more like a comment. But as we move into holidays, traveling, I'm just hoping that we can continue with educating on mitigation strategies in the school protocols and revisit that with the admin, staff, the children and families. And also just encouraging, um, you know, the community as well as we as we did in the past to be safe and responsible and to keep us, our children, all safe and healthy.
Definitely.
All right. Thank you very much, Steve. Appreciate it.
Thanks very much.
Um, looking to action items, we had this as a placeholder but did not need to add any action items to this agenda. So we can skip over number seven.
I know, right? Moving right along. Uh, the next one is is pretty quick. I just wanted to make sure we had consensus on our 2022 Board of Education meeting dates. I did did a little homework after we talked last time and and did find that the second June meeting that we had talked about did was pretty heavy financials. Um, so I left that on here for consideration. We had consensus on adding the second date in August, so that's on here as well. We also had conversation around this meeting, the the second one in November, whether it stays or goes. I would recommend it staying, again, largely because of financials for accounts payable and and business of the of the district. I think we could make a effort to make sure it's a little less staff-focused before the holiday, though. That said, any Board of Education meeting can come off an agenda. Historically, we haven't canceled a lot. I know some of our neighboring friends in other districts have. And so as long as we give eighteen hours of public notice, that is possible. So I just wanted to submit this for consideration. The goal would be to put it on the consent agenda for next time. So there's no vote or or anything needed like that tonight. So just wanted to gather any additional input at this time.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to open up some discussion about, you know, I Jenny, when you we last meeting, our trustee Miller, you you hit on something that really resonates for me. Every time we have one of these meetings, it's a tremendous commitment for our staff. And 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 they do a great job and they prepare presentations and they have people join us. I think adding meetings and not respecting that goes against our family. Like, I I just, I don't, I would like, I would prefer to see us, if we're going to add a meeting in August, have us at minimum take out at least one. And I I actually, I would look at November twenty-second, just because it is right before Thanksgiving and it impacts the ability of people to travel and what have you. And I'd look at June meetings because of vacations and that kind of thing. So I guess, Steve, what I'd ask you, if I can ask a question in this, is do you think that, yes, we have important financial things in June? We have important, you know, things to do in November. If we had one meeting, could we still get the business of our district done in those two months?
Yeah, yeah, I I do think that if we did adjust to having one meeting in June and or one meeting in November, if we knew in advance, we could adjust agendas so that we would just have, you know, one meeting in each of those months. Those meetings might be a little longer because we'd have to conduct more business. But do I think we could do it? Yeah, I do. And I I would agree that if we're going to add an additional meeting in August, I I would recommend that we take at least one meeting off.
Well, then I guess I will say, like, just my preference for that. My preference would be for for twenty scheduled meetings. Because I don't think we'll cancel a meeting if we if we it's on our our schedule. So that's that's this trustee's thoughts.
So I just want to clarify one thing and then build off of something that Steve said. So just to clarify, the year previous, we didn't have an August meeting. That was the choice of the previous board, of which I was a member. Previous to that, there had always been a a second August meeting. So it was it was an anomaly not to have that. The other thing I would say is the Truth and Taxation meeting is typically the second one in June, and I know Miranda's not here. I'm already missing her, but I'm glad she's on vacation. Dennis, do you happen to recall if that's tied to a particular date? Because it's it's very procedural how we have to handle that. It has to be a separate board meeting that we call right at six-thirty in advance of the regular board meeting that we do at that second one in June. Do you remember if it's tied to a particular deadline or whatnot?
It is tied to a particular deadline. I don't remember exactly what that is. Steve, you may know.
Well, I can add that I did ask Miranda about this. And she said if she had advance notice, she would be able to handle doing it at the one meeting in June, if we only had one meeting. So that's what she had told me.
Don't want to get in trouble with financials.
So I thought more about this as well. And since you brought it up, um, with the MASB conference that I attended and talk about later and talking to multiple board members, um, they weren't meeting this week. And so it, you know, that got me thinking. I was like, oh, okay. Well, and some, of course, we've heard have just canceled school altogether due to staffing and COVID issues. But I so we can cancel meetings, but we can also schedule meetings that aren't on there. And I know that's kind of what we did for August this year. So I don't know if it's something that board members could have some of these as placeholders. But, you know, um, we don't have them on these dates. So I think that's kind of what happened with with August. But I would also look at November twenty-second and not not putting it on here, but also we can we could call a meeting. And then also, um, some boards don't meet twice a month. They meet once a month. So I know we have our regular Board of Education meeting and then we have a study session. And so I don't know that we've really defined like what's different this year. It's just kind of, you know, um, we just, you know, do our work and plow through, which we've had a lot of work to do this year. But that's something to take into consideration as well.
I I can just give an opinion on 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 that. I I think there's a a lot in building these agendas and I I would not consider going. My personal vote would not be going to one meeting a month just because of the the massive lift that we already have on on all of these agendas. That that's just my my input.
Oh, no, I'm totally not guessing that. I'm just thinking about.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So what I'm hearing from this side, and then I want to make sure I I come over here. I'm I'm hearing the possibility of either the June or the November, one of those, the second meeting coming off. I Candace, Michael, Jenny?
Sure. I just want to add that I I also would be in favor of this particular week, Thanksgiving week, coming off. And it was reassuring to hear Steve say that we could still get the business done. They could adjust around our schedule. So that would be the one I'd be in favor of.
Well, you won't be at the the June eight, June twenty-eighth anyway, right?
Um, it looks like our schedule has changed, so I will be able to make that one.
That's one I still can't attend, cannot attend. And sir, I didn't want to cut you off. I'm also, I've been giving a lot of thought to the November twenty-second one and dropping that one. And I I can live with that, again, according to the parameters that were noted earlier, that we could get the business done. So.
Jenny, any other thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I I know I I kind of started that train at the last meeting. But I think even if it's not staff-centric, we still have our entire admin admin staff here. I also think, you know, it it changes what we can put on an agenda because we know, we've had lots of public comment this year, that 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 we need to have some accessibility. And so, um, you know, we don't want to have things on the agenda where where the public might feel like they, it wasn't accessible for them to have public comment. So I I think that November meeting especially. But I also would say that I just think for our staff and even for us that when the school year wraps up mid-June, there's some fatigue there. And so I think there's something to be said for getting business done on June fourteenth, even if it's a long meeting, and then taking a moment to breathe while we relaunch on July first for the next school year. So those two meetings, to me, especially because we know the July meeting has been, you know, we we say frequently that it's our shortest meeting. So if that meeting needs to be a little bit longer or if the June fourteenth meeting needs to be a little bit longer. And like Susan said, we couldn't, trustee East, or but Secretary East, I'm sorry. We're very casual tonight on this Thanksgiving week. I even wore jeans today. So anyway, so I I just think that we can, we could potentially keep that as a placeholder. I know we did that in August. I I think it was like August twenty-fourth or something I had penciled in, like we might meet again. I I think adding the August meeting is favorable because I do remember thinking there was a lot in August this year and I could have used, there's a lot that happens between that first or second week in August and the start of the school year, and I could have used an update. I was getting a lot of phone calls and emails and questions about the start of the school year. And and I I know this year wasn't as typical as the past, but there still, even in a typical year, we have a lot happening as as school approaches. So I think adding that meeting would be great. And I think that our staff is back at that point and for the most part. So that gives us a chance to, um, you know, to feel that, the excitement of the start of the school year too and and to to understand what's happening throughout the district. So that is my personal preference. I also think, as Susan mentioned and as Brad mentioned, that not all boards even meet this much. I do think that we get a lot of business done and I'm not saying that that we don't. And I think typic- our typical two meetings a month is fine. But I think when we can take some meetings off our plate, but not just our plate, the seven of us, but our community and our staff as a whole, I think that that is thoughtful. So again, I'll keep it penciled in. If we need to add a meeting, I'm not opposed to that.
Okay, all right. So yeah, I think I think we achieved consensus on on the August twenty-third date. And looking at the first day of school next year and the first meeting being September thirteenth, that's just a long time. Our our families need information to to go back to school. So I totally agree with that. So we're we're basically down to to June and November. I mean, we don't have to take a vote. We can kind of do a raise of hands. If if I personally had to pick, I'd pull November off. Historically, this agenda has been lighter. It's tied to possible vacations for staff and for families. The June is is typically heavier. And and I understand that Miranda can pull stuff forward, but it's 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 always been a pretty heavy agenda. So I would vote to remove November. If we remove one, I would not remove both.
So this is, um, just to clarify, November twenty-second and June twenty-eighth? Okay.
Right. It's the second meeting of the of the month for for both. And honestly, July has one meeting and December has one meeting. So the following month, it's the same pattern. So there there's, you know, there's the same distance between the next meetings. But would everyone agree if we pulled November off of this and put it on consent for next time? Is there anybody opposed to pulling November off?
No.
Does everybody want to go on vacation next Thanksgiving? I'm kidding. Okay.
Are you are you saying just pulling November? Are you saying you want to know about November and then are you going to ask about June also?
No, we we will just pull. So as the packet reads, the only date coming off will be November twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two.
So we're going, so I think we're requesting to talk about June as well. So not just one or the other, but a possibility of both.
They're all saying November.
Okay. Okay, I I would like to keep June on because of the heavy business, particularly particularly financial and particularly in the year that we have coming up next year with financial focus. It it's it's a, um, it's just a heavier heavier meeting. I I worry having so many meetings that are only once per month. So I I would I would be against removing June.
Yeah, we, the second meeting in June typically, you're right, has focused more on finance heavier. You know, if Miranda says we can get that forward and and do it early, that's fine. But we're still then, we have two months in a row of just one meeting per month. I'd be inclined to to keep that second meeting in June.
I'm I'm okay doing a placeholder or.
I I would prefer not to have. So this is this is a legal posting that we have to have put up due to OMA. And so we have to have a a list of our meetings. We can't really have like a placeholder.
No, that would be, that would be amongst a possible.
Yeah, I I I think it would it would still be optimal to have a little bit firmer schedule. We never know what we're going to be in in the moment, depending on COVID, depending on on all sorts of different things. So I I I would rather not say, let's remove stuff, but just then keep them all as placeholders. Logistically, that's a little harder to to deal with. So Susan, you're saying you would like to remove both June twenty-eighth and November twenty-second?
Sure.
Okay. Brad, what are you saying?
I'm in agreement with that. I would remove both.
Okay. Dennis, what are you saying?
I delete the second November, but keep the second June.
Okay, I I agree with Dennis. I would keep I would keep the second June, delete the November twenty-second. Michael?
I'm going to pass on this discussion.
I, uh, since we're going down the row, I'll just say that I think it's easier to add a meeting than to take a meeting away. So I would be more inclined to take a meeting from June and take a meeting from November, especially because our finance assistant superintendent said that she could get the business done in in the earlier meeting. So that would be my inclination if we were voting.
Okay, so you're saying take away June and take away November. Okay.
Yeah, for those same reasons. Ditto.
Michael, do you want to say anything?
We're not voting on this.
No, I I know. I'm just making sure that you don't.
I was very clear that I can't be at the June meeting, so it's moot.
Okay, okay. All right, then we'll close the discussion and move on to administration updates.
Okay, I just have a thank you tonight I'd like to make. So I put this in the, well, the normally, the Friday community message, but I did it today since we're we're moving on a five-day break. But I did want to read it. So as we head into Thanksgiving break, I do want to thank the entire SAS community for your continued support of our remarkable students and staff. Yes, there have been a number of challenges, but the full transition to five days a week of in-person instruction has been excellent. And below are a few things that I am especially thankful for. One, the entire SAS student body who daily demonstrates their educational talents in our schools. Two, the collaborative nature of our SAS staff in dealing with staffing shortages and other challenges. And your commitment with Laura here tonight, Anna Ben, Kurt, Cara, Betty. I mean, we just have a terrific staff that's been so collaborative during this entire year. And third, the SAS community who's been responsive, flexible and encouraging throughout this school year. And then I did want to recognize the, thank the Board of Education for all of your hard work. I'm not sure if anyone can truly understand the amount of time and energy it takes to be an effective an effective Board of Education trustee. I watch the sacrifices that all of you are making to help better support our students and I'm very appreciative. So thank you.
Thanks, Steve. That was that was nice. Appreciate that. Julian, would you like to go next?
On behalf of all the students, we're thankful for everything all our teachers, faculty and administration does. And happy Thanksgiving.
Short and sweet. Trustees? Yeah, Brad?
Well, I I'd be remiss if I didn't say that this has been the most difficult school year I've ever or most challenging school year I've ever experienced. And so I'd be remiss at this time of year around Thanksgiving if I just didn't say that one of the greatest gifts I'm thankful in my life are is to have my children, Graham and Bryce, in our schools. Our people are special. The people who staff our schools, the people who care about education and care about their their community. I I see people who are who are coming together to support and to do things. And I I am so grateful that we're we're banding together and fighting and trying to get through things. And I'm I am so thankful to every person who impacts my kid's life in any way. And I want you to hear that from me. Thank you very, very much from the bottom of my heart. And I want you to hear that from me. Thank you very, very much from the bottom of my heart. I'd also would agree with Steve and would like to say that I'm humbled and thankful to be a part of this team. You know, when I went to the MAS B conference last weekend, what a point of pride it is for me to wear Celine Area Schools on my badge. And to be able to talk to people about the team that we have and the tremendous work we're doing that I really do think is impacting our hallways, our classrooms. And so I'm grateful for you guys. I'm thankful to be part of this team. Thank you, each of you.
Any more? Yeah, Jenny?
I think just a just a moment of gratitude also to to our students, to our staff, from everyone who greets our our children on the bus in the morning. To everyone who interacts with them throughout the day and dismisses them in the evening or comes back for sporting or extracurricular events or travels with them. I this year has meant a lot to our family and to to my two sophomores in particular. And I think I think it was Treyon recently who said that, you know, oftentimes we hear a lot of the disagreements in the community. Or some of the, you know, some of the things that make the news, I guess, is is what I'll say. But the things that that I am focusing on right now are are the things that bring us together for a better, for the good of for the good of the whole. So the fact that hundreds of families were fed through Celine Area Social Services this year. And especially this week with the distribution of the turkey turkey pot pie dinners and and pies. And how our community came out and donated and supported in the efforts to get those to families who wouldn't have had that is is pretty remarkable. And I saw it again, just just recently, a fa- a family experienced a home fire. And just the way that the community came together really overnight and started to think about what they could do to support a family who didn't even know yet what they would need. Those are the things that I treasure in our community and that that remind me of the community that really does care for one another. And so I'm thankful to be a part of this community. I know that when times are tough for me, the community has had my back and and I like to pay that forward whenever I can. So thank you to our staff and thank you to our community and happy Thanksgiving to those who are celebrating this week.
Great. Anybody else? Yeah, Candace.
Great. Well, I also want to echo the gratitude. I am very grateful for this opportunity, working with you all. For all the families and staff and and everyone that that supports, that keeps this district going. I'm grateful, truly. Getting a little teary-eyed just thinking about some of the support that one of my sons in particular has received this year. It's been a challenging year, you know, and and the staff, Laura Washington, has been amazing. So thank you for that. I wasn't expecting that to come. I also want to say I participated virtually in the MAS B conference and it was great. It was really well done virtually. So I wasn't, I'm, you know, always a little hesitant with virtual conferences. Sometimes it's good, sometimes it's, you know, you feel like you missed out. And I really didn't feel like I missed out. I I got to participate in all the general sessions as well as some great virtual workshops on family engagement and student well-being and equity in in schools and and school governance, which I thought was really, really good, powerful session. So I am more energized, you know, for the work. And and one of the quotes from one of the speakers really stood out to me. It was stories are the gateway to empathy. And I feel like so much has been coming up in our community, you know, or and there have been disagreements and misunderstandings on all sides. And I just think the more that we can really connect with one another and get to know each other's stories, that we can we can move forward even more powerfully. So we say we're committed to inclusion and and diversity and equity and but really it's about empathy, you know, and understanding one another. Regardless of background, regardless of where we live or where we come from. So I'm looking forward to learning more of your stories, you know, from from our community and connecting more with one another. So thank you.
Well, since we're talking about thanks, I am quite grateful to be part of an amazing community that we have here. So while you were all in the MAS B conference, or many of you were, I was holding down the fort. No, I was just engaged with a lot of things in this community. I was quite remarkable at just how engaged we are. So let me just run down a a short list of some of the things I was up to. The quality, community quality conversations we held in the basement of the Celine Police Department. And we basically didn't, we, one of the things we do is go around the table with all these community leaders and just share updates. But we actually engaged in a really deep and profound conversation about civility and frustrations with with the online lack of civility or the lack of civility online. And I'll leave it at that point, but Chief Hart and I are both looking for ways that we can move this group forward. And I want to thank Anna Britnell. While you were in MAS B, we, the Celine Olympiad was held here, the Science Olympiad, sorry. Twenty-four schools came. It was Nath Akela's first time running the show and it was fantastic. He did a great job. Got to learn a great deal about the proper ping pong balls that one's allowed to heft into the air, which is really, really interesting. And honestly, there are there are people with tape and measuring sticks saying, you know, seventeen inches, it has to be exactly seventeen, you know, whatever. But the 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 kids were so into it. I attended Shannon Washington's, one of the 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 live presentations on culturally responsive instruction. I thought it was great. It was well done. And so I was grateful. So many of community members came out. I attended the views from the Capitol. I think you were there, Secretary Eastep and and Trustee Jones, just the other day to find out. Just to get a handle on some of the things coming coming around the corner for us in the year. And I know I'm grateful for this group of people that we're up for the challenge. In addition, one last bit of, two last bits of gratefulness. I I met with with Dr. Latch, City of Celine staff, the police department and a motley crew of Wildwood parents to discuss crossings, the crossing at one of the intersections in front of Heritage School. It's a bit of a tricky spot. We've tried so hard to get with a crossing guard there. Just hasn't worked. But by the end of the meeting, we actually came to some conclusions and had a commitment from the city for fifteen thousand dollars, maybe, for LED lights and and other things to make that crossing safer for our kids. So we're we're working toward it. And this was, at first, it it I thought it was going to be a prickly meeting, but all the parents were there. And I'm one of the Wildwood parents. All the parents were there. Everyone was was, not a single person said at the end of that meeting, well, it's not my problem. It's the school's problem. No, it's the police's department. No, it's the city's department. We all worked together to solve that, to work on that problem. The last thing I wanted to public shout out to fifth grade teacher Natalie Anderson. I was in a great position this year that I could give away a membership to the International Society for Technology and Education, ISTI, and a and an armful of books and a few other things and to a deserving teacher. And we went through the the group, Cara Davis, and she put me to Tina Andrea Conlon. And we finally got a name of somebody, a teacher that was absolutely outstanding in in the way of her use of technology, and it's Natalie Anderson. So we're looking forward. Now, now we got to try and get her down to New Orleans, okay? I'm not not looking at you particularly, Dr. Latch. But that's, the New Orleans is where the conference is being held this June, which is why I won't be at that June eighteenth or twenty-eighth meeting. So I could be sweating it out in La- in New Orleans. So I'm very grateful for this team that we have here and I've got more people to thank, but I'm going to save that for another day, next week, two weeks. Next week when no one's here, right? No, in December.
My committee update from the Foundation for for Celine Area Schools, a very generous one hundred thousand dollar gift was received. So well done, Ann Hurst and and all of the volunteers, and thank you to that generous donor. All of those go to support our kids through building grants and individual teacher grants, and so we're very thankful for that. I sense a little theme here tonight. Also, just wanted to let the public know if you're interested in getting involved with the foundation, they are having a volunteer fair. It's in this room. It's on December eighth. And they have one at nine-thirty in the morning and they have one at seven PM at night. And if you can't attend either of those, just reach out to them or or shoot me an email and we'll get you the volunteer coordinator, Adrian Foose, who's who's putting all of that together. We'll make sure you get you get connected. I was traveling a bit this past week. So first going to Grand Rapids for Michigan Association of School Boards, my first in-person conference in over two years. So that felt different and felt good. It 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 was wonderful not to feel alone and to be in a a community of other school board trustees who are are serving their students and their communities and hear the same topics that we discuss. I was particularly interested in conversations we had around how to improve community relations and also school finance. Did a lot around school finance while I was there. Also, just got back from Lexington, Kentucky, or should I say Paris, Kentucky? I I joined our, as trustee Gerby did also, joined our middle school cross-country team. They are for nationals, the first time that they have ever been. Thank you, coaches Stafford, Berkeley and Phelps. Really appreciate the the kindness and the time that you have given all of these kids. We had four teams go, two teams of girls and two teams of boys. They split them for nationals. They split them by age. I'm happy to report that they all placed very, very well with our thirteen and fourteen-year-old girls taking eighth place in the nation. So that's a that's a really big deal because when folks go to nationals, we had our little middle school tent set up. And you look around and it's all of these elite running clubs who are fantastic, but they're all these elite running clubs. And what they do is they draw from what they see as the best runners in their area. And they might come from, you know, Ann Arbor or Mylan or Lincoln or wherever they're from. And our coaches decided that they wanted to stay true to the team that had come all the way through the season. So they were, every single one of them was a Celine Middle School student. So really liked that. Coach Stafford sent a note out to the to the families and the kids, and I wanted to read just a little bit of it because this really speaks to me about what we try to do with our children in the district overall. And and when we think about our educators and our coaches and our our extracurriculars and our clubs and our music program, it's 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 the whole picture, right? I said, we are so proud to coach these kids. Yes, we have solid runners, but most of all, we have really great young people. They display good leadership, kindness and acceptance daily. They have it in perspective. They have fun. They truly enjoy being together. When it comes time to raise, they get their game faces on and they take care of business. And that's how I think of so many of our students and Julian, you probably know a lot that 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 you're with at the high school that are the same way. So wanted to just give them a really big shout out. While we're talking about gratitude, please remember to write your personal notes to our staff. Whether you're sending it to food service or bus drivers or paraprofessionals or teachers or admin or any anybody that you would like to who's really touched you or or your child's life, they would really appreciate it. They're accepting notes up until we go on winter break. So you have time. And then finally, I just wanted to say this has been another challenging year. But even in this pandemic, we have a lot to be grateful for, as we have heard and we we know our community is feeling the same way. So thank you and hopefully everybody can get some much-needed rest this weekend. Moving on. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you meant, okay, go ahead.
So I know I'm forgetting like a whole bunch because I feel like the past couple of weeks have been crazy busy. So with the DEI Advisory Committee, they met with equity team leaders from across like all the buildings. And so the DEI Advisory Committee learned a lot about what they're doing in their own buildings. The PTA and the PTO involvement and making practice, some of their practices more inclusive. And so I think I think that's great. And then also gave feedback about some, like what supports they need. And so I thought that was a really good opportunity from, you know, taking it from the strategic planning and bigger goals to see how those are being implemented into our buildings and classrooms. So I'm really excited about that communication and work that is happening. MAS B, I was there Thursday and in person and was required to be in person, so. But it was great. MAS B at the conference, they, again, requirements with masking and protecting everybody at the conference was outstanding. So I appreciated that. Thank you, MAS B. So Thursday, with being part of the Resolutions and Bylaws Committee, we met. And then the delegate assembly was that night. And so some of the things, there were amendments to some of the current resolutions through MAS B and also a couple of new resolutions that we introduced. I'm just going to point out a couple, couple of them, but I have a lot, this big packet. And I can't wait to, you know, share it with the policy committee and have have some conversations about what resolutions there are. And hopefully, you know, maybe take some of those into consideration with policies. One of one of the amendments was equity in education and to be consistent with all of the other resolutions. We incorporated language, sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression and documentation status. And I was super excited about, you know, adding the documentation status as well. And that came from one of our committee committee members and also having me there as well. Being able to have representation to have that, have an eye from an identity that may have not been represented represented before on that committee. So I thought thought that it's really great how they're trying to bring diversity into to their committees and I appreciated that. Safe, safe and secure schools, an amendment was made to encourage and add restorative justice practices as part of conflict resolution policy. So there's great language with that. Some new resolutions with strategic plan, goals and accountability. And that's, you know, based on looking at the Department of Education, Michigan. And then social emotional learning and supports. I'm really excited about that one as being part of the Wellness Committee. They've been talking about creating a policy and wanting to do that on social emotional learning. So I'd already told them, you know, something is in the works. I can't wait to to share that with. Our our chair right now is Musetta Dineen, so I'll be contacting her soon. And then, so the the big thing that stood out to me with the conference. And I think maybe Candace, maybe it might be the same person she quoted. But our main speaker was Brandon P. Fleming. And I I'm, I said his name and I'm in chills. I I like, it was just hearing him talk and his experience and how an educator impacted his life. You know, coming from, I mean, so he wrote a book, I can't wait to read it, called Miseducation. But he's currently a debate assistant assistant director of debate at Harvard and runs a program to bring students from, I want to say Georgia, I can't. Thank you, yep. And and so bringing them to Harvard to do debate and to get an education in Harvard. And, you know, it's inner-city kids, student, children, students of color. And just hearing their story and how they've, you know, just had a great experience. And I guess being a student affairs professional with, you know, my career. I just, I see that they had a professor who encouraged them and pulled them up and taught them to read. Like he was in college and could, you know, did not have those skills. And so took time, you know, out of her own time and supported him. And I feel like there's educators here that do that as well and so and our staff. And so that kind of goes into. And so that kinda goes into my, my thank you, um, to what, um, you know, e- everybody's doing here. And, uh, you know, you're changing people's, people's lives. So, thank you.
All right, great. Dennis?
Yeah, I'd also like to thank everybody. My thank you comes from a, a bit of a longer perspective, uh, forty-year career or so, even finance and law and banking. I tell you, I haven't seen any organization that could do what all of you have done. Staff, teachers, the commitment to take on problems, solve the problems, work together. I've never seen any organization like it in all my time. So that's what I'm thankful for, is I know that this organization can deal with any problem that comes its way. And we have had a lot of problems, we've dealt with it. But it's not surprising that we can do it. Our community, as we've all said, has that same philosophy of coming together, dealing with our problems. And I'm very thankful for it. Everyone's so committed to it. And I'm really thankful for the commitment that we have up here with my fellow trustees and our staff. The commitment that they put in to becoming better trustees is, is amazing. So I'm very thankful for it.
Thanks, Dennis. Anybody else? Okay. Moving on to, uh, item ten, our consent agenda. The following are offered as part of the consent agenda. The motion noted will allow for the authorization of all items without discussion unless a member of the board requests that any one or all be considered individually. I'd like to please entertain a motion and move to authorize the following items as part of consent agenda. A, approval of the Board of Education, regular meeting minutes of November ninth, twenty twenty-one. B, approval of the Board Policy Committee meeting minutes of November eighth, twenty twenty-one. C, approval of payment of the general fund accounts payable of November twenty-third, twenty twenty-one in the amount of nine hundred and, nine hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and three cents. D, approval of payment of the bond series three accounts payable of November twenty-third, twenty twenty-one in the amount of seventy thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-four cents. E, receive and file our finance and human resources reports. F, the approval to adopt revisions to Board Operating Procedure nine one five zero, school visitors as recommended by the policy committee. G, approval to adopt Neola revisions as recommended by the policy committee for the following board policies. Six, one one four, cost principles. Eight, three, two, zero, personnel files, and eight, three, three, zero, student records. May I please get a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Michael, Brad, second. Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, consent agenda passes seven zero. Um, items scheduled on our next agenda?
Uh, continue to learn with the focus on COVID and then ninth grade transition.
All right, great. Now is our second opportunity for public comment. A member of the public may address the board briefly. Thank you, uh, for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. We have one parent, Darcy Berwick, and I'm seeing, um, uh, seeing no student comments. So Darcy, if you'd like to approach, and I know that you remember the rules with Secretary Eastup's cards, right? Okay, whenever you're ready.
Green light's on. Uh, I've been up here to talk about the Summit Program, but I think it was with the previous board. And there was a lot of great conversation about it today, uh, and the, the misnomer about it all being on computers. And I would like to address, um, what I feel is a separate misnomer is that, um, you need to be a certain type of student to succeed in the Summit Program. You know, my kid was, uh, in sixth grade when it was going to be introduced for seventh grade. And met with Brad and, um, and the teachers. And, you know, they were like, "Oh, this is a great program if you are self-motivated, if you can work independently, if you manage your time." Well, my kid checks none of those boxes. And but his sixth-grade teachers, who were to become Summit teachers, said that, don't, this program will be great for your kid. And it was. He is, uh, you know, the kid who loses the paper homework, the kid who does the homework and doesn't turn it in. The kid who could care less if it gets turned in, even if he did it. This platform and the teachers who, uh, ran those classrooms, he was successful. It was fabulous. And so I, I would love to see, um, that program pushed a little bit more in that direction with parents. Because if you look at some Facebook groups, it's, "My kid's not right for Summit." I, I think that misnomer still exists. And I, I just, it was incredibly successful for him for seventh and eighth grade. When COVID hit and we had to transition at home, it was, it was seamless just because of the way that platform was. And I think that there was some apprehension on our part about whether or not he would continue to succeed in high school. And, and thankfully, that's actually doing pretty damn well. So, yeah, I know, it was so exciting. So I, I love the program. I think that, you know, the teachers who are teaching it chose to be those kinds of teachers. They took their summers to train in those programs and they worked with the families. And it has built in fail safes. And what I appreciated most about it was that it was content mastery. My kid could not move on until he had mastered certain subjects. Whereas before, you know, the, the social studies project he'd been working on for a month that he lost the day it was turned, turned in. He got a zero for it, right? Because he didn't have the work to show. But that's not the case with Summit. And, and again, just the, the way it's structured is fabulous, and I really love that program. So, thank you.
Hey, thank you. Um, our next meeting, our next Board of Education meeting will be held here in the Liberty Boardroom on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one at six thirty PM. I would now like to entertain a motion, please, to enter closed, closed session of the Board of Education at nine four, eight forty-six PM with the intent to reopen, opens, re-enter open session at approximately nine forty-five PM for the purpose of superintendent evaluation, eight A, under section eight A. A simple majority vote is sufficient to enter closed session. All those in favor of, oh, first, I need a recommended motion, sorry. Thank you, Dennis.
Support.
Jenny, thank you for the support. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, seven zero. We are in closed session. If everyone could exit the boardroom and make sure to take all of their belongings with them, that would be fantastic. Thank you so much.
Are we done?
All right.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, thank you. We are, we have re-entered open session at 11:26 PM. Our discussion item is superintendent evaluation. I'll now go through the instrument provided by the Michigan Association of School Boards. I will address each functional area and their weight and then read the line items involved. And then this will become a part of our consent agenda for our next, our next meeting. The first section is A, governance and board relations. It has a weight of 20% in the superintendent evaluation. A category rating given is 3.5. Item, item one, policy involvement, three. Item two, goal development, 3.5. Item three, information, four. Materials and background, 3.5. Board questions, 3.5. Board development, 3.5. Is this what everyone understands to be the ratings?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Moving on to community relations. Hang on, I'm increasing my font size. Community relations is weighted at 15%. Category rating is 3.58. Parent feedback, three. Communication with community, 3.5. Community feedback, 3.5. Media relations, 3.5. District image, four. Approachability, four. Under staff relations. Is that what everyone, everyone understands for community, community relations?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to staff relations. This is weighted at 15%. He achieved a score of 3.57. Staff feedback, 3.5. Staff communication, four. Personnel matters, three. Delegation of duties, four. Recruitment, three. Labor relations and bargaining, 3.5. Is that what everyone understands the scores to be?
Staff relations. There's one more.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, yep. And then we have item seven, visibility in the district rated at a four. Which puts it at 3.57. Okay. Moving on to the worksheet on business and finance. Increase my font size. This is weighted at 20%. He was scored at a 3.8. Budget development and management, 3.5. Budget reports, 3.5. Financial controls, four. Facility management, four. Resource allocation, four. Again, that's a 3.8. Is that what everyone was in agreement on? Thank you. Instructional leadership is next. This is weighted at 30%. Overall score is a 3.75. Performance evaluation system, 3.5. Building level leadership, four. Staff development, four. School improvement, three. Curriculum, four. Instruction, four. Student feedback, 3.5. Student attendance, four. Support for students, 3.5. Professional knowledge, four. Is that what everyone agrees with? Okay, perfect. Our other required components are student growth, weighted at 40%. A rating of three was given. Progress towards district-wide goals, weighted at 10%. A four was given. So that rolls up to 91%. Or three, I need to put my glasses on for this one. 3.658. Is that what everyone understands to be the scores? Okay. Excellent. I would like to now entertain a motion to adjourn the Board of Education meeting of November 23rd, 2021, at 11:31 PM. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Yep.
Out of four.
Out of four. Yeah. Effective rating. Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion, please, to adjourn the Board of Education meeting of November 23rd, 2021, at 11:32 PM.
So moved.
Jenny, thank you. Brad, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, 7-0. We are adjourned.